The Board will certify that a closed session was conducted in accordance with the Code of Virginia as amended two dot two dash three seven one two. I'm looking for a motion to certify that closed session.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Second.
This is.
This is Payne.
Yes.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Ms. Cox.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
So, welcome to the June twenty twenty four school, we're in, guys. Sorry to keep you guys waiting. Uh, we're gonna start with the election.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you much. We'll move right to the, the recognitions. Uh, first up, we have the one bag challenge.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Pulaski County School Board, Pulaski County Public Schools, and Pulaski County Board of Supervisors teamed up to support the one bag challenge that county operated. Students in Pulaski County were invited to take part in this program as well. Elementary students were invited to participate by, by coloring a picture. While secondary students were encouraged to create posters giving information about littering along with a seven hundred and fifty to one thousand word essay on how to end littering in your community. The elementary winner is Olin Perkins. Oakland is the son of Kaylon and Olin Perkins. He's a rising first grader at Olin Elementary School. We'll come get him in a minute.
I'll, I'll come to you. Thank you much, young man. I'm sorry. I'm about to. Sorry, uh, got around.
I'm sorry, show his picture.
Well, uh.
Here. How would you do that?
Well, don't, don't force him. Thank you, guys.
If you look on the screen up here, this is the, uh, this is the picture that Olin drew for us. We certainly appreciate Oakland you taking care of us and helping us learn more about keeping our community clean. The secondary winner is Alex Williams. Is Alex here? Alex is the son of Alex and Catherine Williams. He's a rising ninth grader at Pulaski County High School and will receive a five hundred dollars gift, five hundred dollars scholarship for his essay and poster submission. We are very proud of these two students and wish them the best in the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five school year. Here is Alex's poster here.
Is Alex or his parents here? Because we're not giving away cards, we're actually giving. Okay. We'll get, we'll get this checked.
Here is Alex's essay as well. If you want to read this, please go to Board Docs. It'll be on there as are the, the poster and, and Oakland's, uh, picture too. So, uh, thank you all.
Thank you much. So, next up is recognition of citizens. The first part, public comment section, will be for persons who wish to address the board about the items that are on tonight's current school board agenda. Items presented by citizens may be referred to the superintendent for, for research who may report back to the board at subsequent meeting or through other communication. If you wish to comment about individual employees or the performance, please present your comments to the superintendent first. Such matters will not be discussed this time. Please leave your comments to three minutes, and the public comment period only lasts thirty minutes. Anyone who's not able to speak during the first public comment section, there will be a second at the end of the meeting. Uh, if you walk up, please state your name and your district. Please, please state your name.
Hi, I'm Dr. Megan Thomas. I'm a board certified pediatrician and internal medicine physician. I've been born and raised in Tazza County and been in practice in the area for over ten years. Being a citizen and a physician, I've seen firsthand the effects of poor healthcare impacting children's ability to attend and to be successful in schools. And statistics back us up on these observations. School-based health centers started in the nineteen sixties to help address these inequalities. And in twenty twenty two, there's over thirty nine hundred school-based health centers in forty nine states in the District of DC. This is a place where children who are already spending most of their time in school can get additional services and healthcare. FQHCs like the one that our court, Community Health Center, sponsor sixty three percent of the SBHCs in the United States. Um, and we are available to populations that traditionally face a lot of barriers to care. About eighty percent of schools served by school-based health centers are Title I schools who receive federal funding to help support the high percentages of children from families with lower incomes. These are our students of Pulaski County. Based on the Virginia Department of Education statistics, over forty two percent of our Pulaski County students are economically disadvantaged and also suffer significantly percent of chronic absenteeism. And school-based health centers can help with this. School-based health centers increase access to preventative care such as well child checks, immunizations, nutrition education, screening for fine mask index. We've been shown to reduce absenteeism, increase graduation rates, reduce dropout rates, and increase students' connectedness to schools. There's Colorado-based study examining nearly twenty years of data that showed that schools that had school-based health centers generally had higher graduation rates overall. School-based health centers have also been shown to reduce healthcare costs, particularly to costs of medic, and to Medicaid patients and costs from hospitalizations such as asthma. For students who have chronic illnesses like asthma, receiving treatment on site may reduce their time away from the clinic. For students who have chronic illnesses like asthma, receiving treatment on-site may reduce their time away from the classroom. In a study in the Denver Public Schools, adolescent school-based health center users were more likely to have received a health maintenance visit, more likely to have received vaccinations, and more likely to have used less emergency care than other users. They were also less likely to be assured. At our school-based health center, we offer both dental and medical services. Tooth decay is one of the most chronic conditions in childhood and affects a lot of adolescent's lives. Children can't always access primary care services without insurance, and this offers them a way to do so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sarah Rodden, and I'm a teacher in Pulaski County. Um, I'm here to show my support in favor of the healthcare clinic that our county provides. I have referred numerous students um, who have benefited from the clinic. My referrals were for both physical health and dentistry. I have also witnessed the dental care days during our school hours, and several kids did attend. Um, this clinic clearly states it only provides non-controversial care, only basic care. Um, they have seen two hundred and eighty nine students for dental and five hundred and seven students for um, other healthcare needs, and with a little map, that's over twenty percent of our entire student body. When I refer students, the process involves contacting the school nurse, who then would make their own assessment. The uh, school nurse would then print out paperwork and then send it home with the student after contacting the parents that they were sending that paperwork home. I too would provide um, calls home just to be sure that the parents know that I did make that referral and that the parents were a hundred percent in the loop and had transparency. I know the Board ran um, campaigns on parental rights and transparency and how important it is to everyone, and I too try to make meaningful relationships and trust with my parents as a teacher, because when we're all on the same page, our students thrive and succeed, and that is my own goal. I um, whether or not we like it, Medicaid and Medicare is the norm in Pulaski County. Privatized insurance is the minority. Our students do not have the option for how their healthcare is provided. They are minors. And saying that, um, from the University of Ohio, they have done a um, study that twenty seven point seven percent of Pulaski County is eligible for Medicaid and Medicare. Um, so there is a very clear need for this clinic. I've had several students throughout my years in my employment who have suffered from physical ailments and especially dental. It causes a huge truancy issue, which I know was the main focus of Pulaski County this year. Um, our county motto is "Reach Every Child." The verb "reach" to me means to clothe, nurture, help, and guide. Um, it also means that we can help them thrive academically. I encourage you all to understand that we are speaking about minor students, our students that we are supposed to have first, and that we put personal political size, um, politiveness aside, I'm sorry. I am here for all of my students. Thank you.
Hello, please state your name.
Uh, my name is Joan Williams. I live in the Robinson District. And as a parent of two children in Pulaski Public, uh, County Public Schools, I'm here to talk about parental control with regard to this school-based health clinic. I know that's an issue that's important to many of you on the school board and many of us in the room. Um, I think there's two different types of control. One is a shallow kind, where we can make our own decisions regardless of whether or not we understand them. Another is a deeper type of control in which we have the information and support networks to be able to make decisions that are well-informed. For example, I technically have control over decisions about my car, but other than changing the oil and tires, I know nothing about how it works. Even then, I prefer someone else else do those tasks. I'm pretty sure we can all agree that decisions surrounding our children's health are way more important than decisions about our cars. I want to share a personal story about how the school-based health clinic has helped me move from the shallow type of control over my children's health decisions closer to the deep check type of control. All of our children are difficult in their own ways, but I have a child who has always been in many ways more difficult than most. Ever since my child was a baby, I've known this, and I sought out information where I can, where to devise, who is not your friend. All of my children's teachers have been wonderful, but none of them are trained to offer this kind of mental health advice. We've been told many times that we have the freedom to request whatever kind of accommodations or testing that we would like to request of our doctors or of the school system, but we have no idea what our options are. There's no list we can find of what our options are to request. Our medical providers have been very kind and instead of doing have requested, had referred us to a regional services provider, which I won't name, but which after months of waiting for a meeting notified us that they were unable to serve us due to high demands. They were also unable to provide us, to refer us to private providers. It wasn't until we took our children to the school-based health clinic at the high school for their annual checkups that we started to make some headway. There, we had full hour appointments for each of our children. They asked us all the questions, and they answered all of ours. For the first time in my whole life, I didn't feel rushed to finish up my questions so that the doctor could get to her next appointment. And this was the first time that a provider really listened to my concerns about my child, initiated a wide range of screening tests to learn more, and talked to both me and my child about possible pathways to learning more. This was just the first of what has now been an eighteen-month process of learning more, and while it is an ongoing journey, my child, my husband and I already have so many more tools for understanding how my child's brain work and how we can work together to make sure my child can thrive in school and beyond. At no point have we felt pressured to make particular decisions or to do anything we have felt uncomfortable doing. At every point, we have felt supported and cared for along the way. In fact, this time a year ago, I got a call from the doctor at the clinic.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please state your name.
I'm Megan Rakes. I'm one of the pediatricians of the school-based health center. Um, I wanted to speak with you all today because of my passion for the mission of the Community Health Center. Um, I do practice two other, or three days a week at the Christiansburg Clinic, and I've been at the school-based health center since August twenty twenty three. Having grown up in Pulaski County and graduated from Pulaski County High School, I witnessed the lack of accessibility firsthand in the lives of my friends and classmates, which is why I've devoted a decade of my life to enhancing the availability of superior medical care to my community, first as a registered nurse and now as an INVE. I earned this desire to deliver compassionate, high-quality care to my community, created a deep-rooted aspiration to work for the Community Health Center. As a nonprofit organization and a federally qualified healthcare center, our mission is to provide affordable and high-quality medical, dental, behavioral, and preventative healthcare services to people of all ages and circumstances regardless of the living to pay. In the school-based health center, our focus has been on providing essential evaluations and treatments such as sports physicals, concussion follow-ups, and general school physicals and vaccines to ensure the students' wellbeing. We also see students to sit after sick visits and help them get back to feeling better and returning to school and work more quickly. One memorable case involved a seven-year-old girl from an outlying elementary school who was suffering from severe tooth pain. With parental consent, she was brought to the SBHC, which is the school-based health center, and via school bus where I provided antibiotics for her infection. She was then promptly scheduled for early care at our dental clinic in the school. The student had never received dental care before and did not previously have a dental home, as is the case for the majority of our dental patients. Thinking of positive impact in students' lives like this is what motivates me to work at the school-based health clinic and the Community Health Center. As a primary healthcare provider at the school, I have never prescribed or controlled to students, doing so with ethically and morally conflicted with our previously agreed upon terms, as is written in our memorandum of understanding. We've declined requests for SBL testing and pregnancy tests from a DCPS school in accordance with the MOU. I would never do anything that could jeopardize my opportunity to continue providing crucial healthcare services to the students of Pulaski County, many of whom would not be able to access these services in the absence of, or in the, sorry, in the absence of our presence at the school. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name.
Good evening. My name is Neely Russell. I am the school-based dental hygienist for the Community Health Center of Invermore Valley. I'm here to advocate for the school-based health center of Pulaski County School. Since February twenty twenty three, I am the hygienist that has served your community, your students, the students of Pulaski County, as well as your staff and faculty that have signed up to have dental services. I consider myself very fortunate to have been able to meet each of the students, hear their stories, educate them on proper oral hygiene, and the importance of taking care of their teeth. My heart is here with this program in helping children and adults get the care that they deserve. As all you know from the data that was shared at the past meetings, from August twenty twenty three to May twenty twenty four, we, myself and the dentist, performed exams, x-rays, and cleaning on two hundred and nine patients in their schools. Throughout the appointment, each student receives an examination of the dentist, dental x-rays to check for cavities and other oral pathologies, and a thorough cleaning and fluoride treatment. We have also provided dental sealants as a preventative measure to help protect the teeth from decay. Most students that I've seen have never seen a dentist, as well as never had their teeth cleaned. Yes, even the high school students. It is more than evident that this is a need for Pulaski County. There have been very few students that do not have, that do not have to return to the dentist for restorative treatment, that do, they do need to return to the dentist for restorative treatment. Most children need fillings, some need extractions, and several children have accesses which, if left untreated, could be life-threatening. To make sure the children have the necessary dental needs met outside of regular cleaning, exam, and x-rays, we have time set aside for our school-based children at each of our clinics. As we all know, our oral health is directly related to our overall health. Hence, the importance of these services being offered to the children in your community, which would never be in question. My hope is that if you didn't already understand the need in Pulaski County for our school-based health center, medical and dental, that you know now. As I said earlier, I am the lucky one to be able to serve these children, to have healthier mouths, which will in turn benefit them to have good overall health. Thank you.
I'm Halle. Um, I am a provider at the Community Health Center. And so, we have been in touch with many families who have expressed their concern about the future of the school-based health center. We have received pages of comments um, and feedback, but want to be mindful in time, so we're gonna only share a portion of those with you today. So, um, some of our feedback has included patient names or their parents' names. So, Amanda Riley has shared that the school-based health center has been a hundred percent helpful. It does not interrupt her work schedule. There's communication, transparency, and consent. It is an important asset to the community due to lack of transportation. Chris Alderman, who's a father, shared that in rural areas like Pulaski, families often face hurdles such as conflicting work schedules, limited transportation, and stringent insurance criteria, which can impede access to essential healthcare for our children. The Community Health Center addresses these challenges head-on by integrating healthcare services within our schools. This invaluable service is a testament to the community's commitment to the wellbeing of our youngest members. Kristy Dishon shared that they have made major impact on the schools, the Community Health Center and the school-based center, especially for children getting care that they normally would not. Without them, children may be sent home, forced to miss school, and possibly not make it to see a doctor at all. Staff can receive care and go right back to work instead of trying to find a substitute. Um, she shared that my whole family, except for one, has been able to receive care there and has been so helpful to us. I also want to advocate for children who don't have strong support systems. Um, that they may not be able to get their care needed when it's needed, um, if it weren't for the school-based health center, and that this would be a huge loss to the schools if they weren't there. Another school staff member shared that they had been able to get into the dentist twice and did not have to worry about getting a substitute, um, which is really, really difficult in our area. It's heartwarming to see the students receive healthcare that they deserve. Um, Ashley Bowman, who is a mother, shared that it is helpful not having to pull my kid out of school or me having to leave work. So important to have this resource that kids don't have access to at other places, and for parents who don't have access to transportation. Cameron Price shared that being seen on campus prevents me from missing work. I know a lot of students who take advantage of this program, and parents don't have to take off work when you can be seen right there. Amanda Cundy, who's a guardian, shared that it's an incredible thing to have within the school system. When my child was sick or had issues, I didn't have to leave work. All school systems should have a school-based health center, according to her. Tara Brown is a mother who shared that my son was seen the same day for dental without services, he would have been in pain. Um, and because other dentists in the area are so booked up, this service has been invaluable. And Dolores Gelenwater, who's a grandmother, shared that her grandsons hadn't seen a doctor or had access to healthcare before the school-based health center. She didn't have transportation, and that she feels it's been a godsend. Another student guardian shared that it's been helpful to have the ability for her to stay in school.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, please state your name.
My name is Kayla. I'm a care coordinator at Community Health Center. Tara Brown, this is a continuation, I'm sorry, of the comments that Halle started. Tara Brown is a mother, and she stated, "My son was seen the same day for dental, and without this service, he would have continued to be in pain with his other dentists in the area or so booked. This service is invaluable." I mean, that one's already read. Autumn Mordara, a mother, said, "It works well and glad we have it in the school. I personally have panic attacks and find it difficult to take my kids to the dentist. This allows me to be able to avoid that trigger, and my child gets their care." Angel Elliott stated, "It's very convenient for the kids so they don't have to miss school, and for parents as well, so they don't have to miss work." A school staff member stated, "It was helpful to have an option where I could still be on campus and be seen during a busy time." Brooke Cox stated, "I didn't have time to take off for work, and my child seems to feel at ease there even though I'm not present for the appointment. I wish they got some for hours." Jack Leclutter, guardian, just started a new job and does not have a transportation, so it's very helpful that their son can receive services at the school. Rihanna Love stated, "It is very convenient. I can go during the workday, and they can take the insurance that we are offered through the school." Penny states, "Transportation is the most helpful part. Does not have a vehicle, I don't have a vehicle right now. It is very helpful. The clinic is there. I'm able to provide transportation from the elementary school." Kira states, "We just moved here and were able to get everything done at one time. The dentist and assistant were amazing. Played superheroes to help them relax." Amy Taylor stated, "It is very convenient to not having to run everywhere constantly, and I didn't even have to leave work. I'm more than satisfied. Great staff, great experience, welcoming, gentle, and so easy with my four-year-old child. We probably wouldn't have had that anywhere else." Ashley Thompson states, "The clinic is very helpful. Parents work, and they can always take off to take them. Very handy. Staff is amazing and wonderful." Danielle Thompson states, "It is helpful to stay at work, and I don't have to leave my job. They can get them at school. Wonderful people and so helpful." Jessica Reiver, "He, my son, was due for vaccines and his regular canceled, regular physician canceled. We weren't able to get him in with the school-based health center. I'm very grateful we could get him in and relieve some stress, because he would not have been able to start school without them." Chrissy King states, "It's very helpful because I'm a single mom with four kids, and getting everyone sampled at the same time is difficult. It is convenient, it is convenient since I have night shift." Kristy Martin says, "It's helpful to not have to make an appointment outside of school." Amanda Mannan states, "A lot of people don't have transportation in this area, and having a clinic at the school is a big thing for parents." And Paulson states, "As a school nurse, it is helpful. It's a wonderful asset for school nurses, staff, and parents. It provides dental care and accepts Medicaid and provides INVE care."
Thank you. Hello, please state your name.
I'm Kate Thompson. I'm a law card. I know y'all were playing the speakers, didn't play me. So, I'm jumping in to share a point that I haven't heard yet, um, from a community standpoint that I think is really important. These have all been really wonderful stories about the really positive impact this has had on our students here. Um, and I'm gonna kind of throw out, that's not the school's job. Don't attack me. It's not the school's job to provide healthcare. It's not the teacher's job to diagnose illness. It's not a teacher's job to manage um, food insecurity. It's not a teacher's job to manage whether or not children have clothes or shoes, but the reality is that our teachers are doing these things every day. Our school nurses are attempting to be doctors that they may not be qualified to be. They're attempting to handle situations that they may not be ready for or didn't sign up for. Um, so I really want to urge y'all to consider these partnerships. They're really vital to ensuring that we provide the things our students need. They're really vital to ensuring that we provide the things our students need so that they can be great learners and our teachers can do their job. I'll dig down a little bit. We have a conference about the care portal, so I'm going to kind of make a quick tag for that, too. You just have so many amazing resources here in this community. We have partnerships across NRB that can really serve our students well, but access is a real problem. And so, these opportunities to partner with community agencies that can come into the school or connect with the school to do those other things that allow our students to be great learners is such an incredible opportunity. The NRB as a whole is an incredible collaborative network. We don't practice in the same way that everywhere else in Virginia does. I can tell you that from a human services standpoint. We network better than most of the state does. And so, as a school system, I hope that you will be a part of that networking and that collaboration because your teachers deserve it. Your teachers deserve to not have to be nurses and doctors. Your teachers deserve to not spend their money to solve some of these basic need issues that our students are having. And I see that it's a great opportunity to collaborate and really do this well. That said, I'm a conservative parent that wants to know what's happening with my children all the time. My kids are 4-H camp right now. I have not cried yet. It kills me to not know what they're doing and not get to hear and talk about it. So, I do think that ensuring that there's transparency, great communication, that parents and families and the community know what's happening as we do these partnerships. So, I'll be honest, I didn't know a lot about what the community health agreement looks like, but I got caught at the Playboy Festival and got to chat with them about it, and I got to talk with them about what they do offer. So, I think there's probably a little bit of opportunity to educate about this partnership, just like any other partnership we don't create, but I would really encourage you to consider what that means for your teachers. So, yes, it's great they're serving the students so well. The reality is the school system cannot do it all. And partnerships like this give an opportunity for students to get what they need and allow teachers to really focus on the education piece, which our kids can't get to if they're not taking care of.
Thank you. Next speaker. So, no pressure. It was just thirty minutes.
I can get it done in three minutes. My name's Susan Peters. I'm in Denver. And I really appreciate being able to hear all these stories and the recommendations and things like that that we've heard from the parents, and I really appreciate Ms. Thompson's ideas that the school district isn't supposed to have to do it all. One of the things that I haven't heard in the recommendations, I have heard transparency, I have heard convenience, but I haven't heard understanding. And I think that I would like to see, as a taxpayer, I would like to see the health clinics going alongside the parents and saying, "This is part of the ongoing procedure. This should be the next steps looking," and help our parents who, a lot of them, don't have the experience and the professional training, and help, just help them along in getting the right time healthcare for their children. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, the approval minutes. The board was given the minutes for the scheduled meeting tonight, so I'm looking for an approval of tonight's. I'm sorry, or I made a mistake. We're doing approval for the meeting minutes for the May fourteenth agenda, so can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the five fourteen twenty-four schedule meeting?
Mr. Chair, make the motion to approve the minutes for the May fourteen twenty-four meeting.
Could I get a second?
I'll second that.
Mrs. Porter.
Mrs. Payne?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Next up is, what I meant to do was tonight's adoption of the agenda. So, tonight, we were permitted the agenda beforehand. So, tonight, I'm looking for a motion to approve the adoption of tonight's agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the adoption of the agenda.
Second.
I'll say.
Mrs. Porter.
Mrs. Payne?
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Next up, the consent agenda. Before the meeting, the board was permitted to determine bills, personnel, and approve the consent agenda. Those are on your screen. I'll give a moment for reflection. Any questions, comments, concerns? Here none. I'm looking for a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
Could I get a second?
Second.
Mrs. Payne? Second.
Yes, I say.
Mrs. Porter.
Mrs. Payne?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
For all those who just got hired, welcome to the Buzz County Schools family. Next up, our information items. We have a student representative update. It's Mr. Jeremiah here tonight. I don't see him. It's summertime, so if you find him over here.
He'll be on vacation.
Yeah, probably on vacation. Next up. Next up, the evaluate.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Would like to welcome Dr. Matt Hurt from the Comprehensive Instructional Program, who's come here this evening to talk to us about the evaluate program. And we really appreciate you, Matt, taking the time to come up and meet with us. This is an evaluation tool that we could use as a school vision, something that we're very interested in. He's come almost two and a half hours correct to show us this and to help us understand how we can use it from Gilaskey County. And I'll just tell him when to forward it on.
All right, thank you, Rob.
Good evening, folks. Rob asked me to come up and share about our evaluate program, which is a program that was developed and built and maintained in Region Seven, this part of Virginia, for Virginia educators. We have had evaluations in Virginia for staff, administrators, and teachers for many years, and some of that process has been quite diverse. And a few years ago, several of our people got together and said, "Look, we need to spend more time helping teachers and administrators to be better rather than evaluate them." So, that is kind of the idea behind it. So, Rob, you want to go ahead and get started? So, again, this was developed by a group of our Region Seven educators. And of course, Region Seven, for folks that don't know, are the nineteen divisions in the far southwestern corner of Virginia. So, it spans all the way up to Giles County and south and west of there. Again, they wanted a way to document the evaluations that would be very user-friendly, that would require very little training, that would require very little time to document all that stuff, that would include all of the DPE requirements, and would be very cost-effective. So, that's kind of what they put together. It's very good because it does provide a great deal of oversight to central office in this process. And I'm going to show you all some information here in just a minute to show you exactly how important evaluations are when it comes to producing desirable student outcomes. It's one of the most important things really, truly, that we can do from an administrative standpoint. Of course, it all happens in the classrooms with the teachers, but teachers need that good oversight as well to make sure that we're getting that, what we need to get done. We first implemented this tool in two thousand nineteen, twenty school year by four divisions, and by this fall, there's been eleven divisions that have been that will implement, I suspect there will be more than that, actually. It has been updated multiple times as our administrators and teachers and central office people use this over the years. They say, "You know, it would be really good if this program did this instead of that." So, we always take that feedback and we bring everybody together and we get that and ask everybody, "Do we want to make this change?" And if everybody says yes, then that's what we do. Another good thing about the evaluate program, it is extremely transparent. Everybody follows. If a teacher or administrator gets any kind of evaluation process added to them, they're automatically notified via email, so they know upfront. Usually before the principal, the central office person, they get some opportunity to mention it to them. Also, anything that happens in there, they have complete and full access to it, even back to previous years, so they can go back as far as the system has occurred. But anyway, that's kind of the long and the short of the system before we move on to maybe the wise, it's a good reason to do such a thing. Do you all have any questions about the platform itself?
Yes, sir.
Could you just give a brief overview of the Comprehensive Instructional Program in the divisions in two minutes, Rob?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So, the Comprehensive Instructional Program is currently a consortium of sixty-seven school divisions across the state of Virginia. So, that's just a little bit over half the divisions that are participating right now. And of course, we've grown over the years. This all started about ten years ago, back in Region Seven. The superintendents, at that time, when they met in the monthly meetings, they were noticing that the SOL scores kept going down. And when the scores get so low, you get visitors from extra people coming to kick in the front door of your school. And they let the teachers do all kinds of things they would rather not do, like always got off the lesson plan templates, and things that really get in the way of making things better for our kids. So, the superintendents didn't like that. They'd all been suffering through the Great Recession. They said, "Why don't we do something about that? We don't have the capacity within each of our divisions. Let's pool our talents and resources and put something together so that we can kind of help everybody with that." So, that was the idea. And so, it started down here in this end of the state, and it's kind of crossed the state. So, we've got, again, people all over the state that are not participating in this. But anyway, we work with teachers, we do a lot with data, we do a lot with assessments and great, all that kind of thing. And another thing that we do is we really heavily invest in data analysis because our mission is to improve outcomes for our kids. And if we don't have a good grasp of that data, we don't know where we are and if we're making the acceptable progress or not. So, one of the things I want to share with you this evening is looking at a few data points and showing how what we do as educators really make an impact with our kids. So, we're looking at last year's SOL performance. The state has not yet published this year's because we're still administering tests throughout the state. We should get that in September so we can update this at that time. But when we look at last year's performance, Region Seven had the highest SOL pass rates in the state overall, as well as in history, math, reading, science, Region Seven was second in writing. If you go back several years before the superintendents came up with this idea of working together, Region Seven was racing to the bottom. They were among the lowest performing in the state. And of course, they would put teachers in charge of instructional decision-making, and you look user data to move ahead, that's really helped us a lot. Now, when you consider that Region Seven is the highest performing in state, it's also important to understand that Region Seven faces some very particular challenges. Region Seven is the least well-funded region in the state on per pupil basis. When you take off state, federal, and local dollars, we get less to operate on than anybody else. We have the highest percentage of kids who live below the federal poverty line. We have the highest percentage of kids with the NAIP. And we have the lowest teacher and administrator salaries in the state. Yet, these folks are producing these kind of results. Rob, I'm going to go on to the next one. Now, these are the results for Gilaskey County over the last several years. You can see the pass rates and then the rank within the state. Last year, there were a hundred and thirty-one school divisions in Virginia. Prior to that, there were a hundred and thirty-two. Now, I would recommend that you not pay attention to the pass rates so much because there's all kinds of things across the state that make those pass rates go up or down. We implement harder tests, we implement easier tests. That causes scores to go up and down. Pandemic, this and that and the other. So, you can see that last year, we ranked ninety-fifth in the state out of a hundred and thirty divisions in overall SOL pass rates. Now, one of the things that we have found, and I think we all intuitively know that this to be the case, is that when we have higher expectations, we usually have better results. The problem is expectations are fairly intangible. You know, we don't walk around with a number tattooed on our forehead that tells us what our expectations are. But we have found a couple of things that kind of help us to determine that. And if you think about it this way, if you ask every educator in Virginia what kind of expectations do you have? And we gave them options of high, medium, or low. What's everybody going to reply? Everybody's going to say that they have very high expectations because we all believe that we do. Does everybody have the same expectations, man? No, that's obvious. So, we've come upon two ways to measure expectations that appear to really make a lot of sense and explain a lot of things. One is looking at the relationships between how our SOL scores for our kids line up with their final grades, of course. And the second one is looking at the relationship between how we evaluate our people versus what SOL scores that we produce. It's a problem. And of course, with grading, there's a lot of different things that go into this. It's not a very simple problem. So, if you'll hit the next one, Rob. I think we all understand that grades are a measure of student performance relative to either the teacher, the schools, or the division's expectations. There's all kinds of different policies. Some schools have very few policies about that. Therefore, it's more on the teacher, sometimes it's more on the division if they have some kind of policies in place. SOL scores, on the other hand, are a measure of student performance relative to the state's expectations. Most human beings, and last time I checked, most of our kids were human beings, rarely will do more than is expected of them. Parents and principals are happier with higher grades than lower grades. Sometimes, if a kid gets a low grade, that can cause conflict. And sometimes, teachers, rather than deal with that conflict, will come up with creative ways of calculating that final grade and avoid that conflict. We've seen that grading mandates can provide significant disincentives for grading. For example, during the pandemic, we found that many divisions had a policy that thou shalt record no grade if thou'st grade below a B, whether or not the kid did the first thing at all. And of course, what that did, that just told the kids that, "Hey, what the teacher's telling you to do doesn't matter." They know that they can do precious little work with that for class. So, I want to show you, this is last year's data across the entire consortium. And I just wanted to point out a couple of things, how this played out. So, what I did, I pulled the division's grades that had the lowest SOL pass rate and compared them to the division that had the highest SOL pass rate. Could you hit the next button there, Rob, please? And if you'll notice, when we look at just the kids that got an A for the course, this was their final grade, the division that had the lowest pass rate, they had about eighteen percent of their kids that got an A for the course to fail their SOL test. And that division that had the highest performance, they only had a little over one percent of their kids that got an A to fail their SOL test. Now, if your kid comes home with an A on a report card, would you expect them to fail their SOL test? And if you click a couple more times, Rob, you'll see that we have some other big disparities with the different grades. You know, over half, almost half the kids in that lowest performing division got a B, failed their SOL test. And it wasn't that bad in that other. If you'll go to the next slide, please, Rob. We've got the same grade distribution table down at the bottom, but I just wanted to show you the difference in the pass rate of those two divisions. And that way, you can kind of see how important accurate grading is. And another way to say how important it is to convey expectations to kids and make sure that they're doing the right thing. You can see there that the highest performing division performed way better than that lowest performing division, whether you're looking at all students, especially ed students, SWDs, or the kids who are identified as economically disadvantaged. And then, this is how our grades were distributed out the last school year. So, this is the entire county. You can see that about eleven percent of our kids that got an A failed their SOL test. About thirty-nine percent got a B, and well over half that got a C. Now, one of the things that we do every year is we analyze the data across the state, and we want to find out what types of things really moves the needle when it comes to student outcomes. And Rob, if you'll hit the next button. There are a number of things that people automatically think about that cause scores to be what they are. Per pupil funding rate, different demographics, teacher vacancy rates, all those kind of things. And when we looked at the correlation, those things did have significant correlation with SOL scores other than the per pupil funding. Now, I don't share that with Amber legislators because we don't want to let them know that. But the rest of that stuff, if you look at it, there is a significant correlation. But when we look at the relationship between grades and SOL scores, you'll see that that has an even greater impact on our student outcomes. And what that tells me is that we, as educators, have the power to impact our kids in a positive way more than those other things have impacted in a negative way. Now, we also have looked at- Now, we also have looked at the relationship between our evaluations and our student outcomes because our evaluations are a way which we convey expectations to our principals, our central office people, our teachers. We've looked at this for a couple of years. Go back just a little bit, Rob. We've looked at this for a couple of years. And what we find is that schools and divisions in which their evaluation results line up with their SOL scores, they have better SOL scores. And where they line up less well, they produce less good results. Now, next one. So one of the things I want to share with you, Rob, this evening was an example. This was an actual evaluation, or we pulled this information from an actual evaluation from last school year. It was not in Pulaski County, so don't make you worry about that. I'm not going to tell you where. No, we're near here. But anyway, if you look at this, this was the goal that the teacher had in their evaluation. We're supposed to have a student growth and achievement goal in all teacher evaluations. So I'll let you look at that goal that was written in there. And Rob, hit the next button. This teacher was rated as highly effective. Hit the next one. And then one more. This teacher produced an SOL pass rate of fifty-seven and fourteen percent. And we looked across the entire consortium. Two more, one more. Eighty percent of teachers in the entire consortium had a higher pass rate than that teacher did. Yet, that teacher was rated as highly effective. Now, let me ask you this. What kind of scores do you think she will yield this year if we gave her highly effective with extremely low scores last year? Take the same. Now, when we look at the relationship between the expectations as conveyed by the evaluations and SOL scores, we see that that's almost a one-to-one correlation. That's why this is such a big deal. Again, it goes back to expectations. It's very hard to measure. But when we expect more, we get more. When we expect less, we get less. So folks, that's what I had prepared for you. What kind of questions, comments, or concerns you all have to leave?
Myself personally, cost and implementation. What are the expectations for both cost and how long would it take to implement this program?
It will take as long as your folks can import all your staff, which can take place in very short amount of time. And then the cost is a one-time fee of two dollars per student. And no recurring fees.
Fantastic.
I actually think you hit the nail on the head when you said expectations are set higher. We stretch our kids. We know they can perform. It's just a matter of encouraging them to perform at that level. That's what I really like what you said.
Our kids are smart as any others and our people are as good as any others.
I had read a couple of months ago where I'm going to guess this program was implemented in Galat City. And they saw an astounding improvement in their grades in SOL scores, correct? Was this the exact?
They didn't win CIP, but not the evaluating part of it.
Okay, so they said they started with a different change your evaluation?
Well, no, they may have, but not this particular one.
Okay, okay. But they did see improvement by changing the evaluation.
So I just have one thing about past Matt's data because he's kind of gives us a daily update on how we do on our SOLs and how we compare towards the other school divisions in our consortium too. And I'm pleased to announce, as you can see on the screen right there, that we had a mark this year. This year, and he does a whole lot better job of explaining this because he's in Region Seven, knows Dr. Data. And I'm not Dr. Data. But could you just kind of give a, just a brief overview of, you can see 2024 and how we did this year compared to last year?
Yeah, the long and the short of it is when we're looking now, within the consortium, we still have this week that some of our divisions are giving SOL tests. But when I pull that data from all of last week, which would contain everything since then, it appears that Pulaski County had, I think, the fifth or sixth highest games in pass rates out of sixty-five divisions within our consortium. Very significant increase in state ranking.
All right.
That's fantastic.
I'm sorry.
I have a question on this. I mean, it just kind of stood out to me. But in comparison, twenty-three to twenty-four advanced pass rates, where you see some drop off, is that common?
That, it varies. Like I say, when you're looking at different tests, you have to look, number one, like when you're looking at out of the two kids. Not everyone were out. Which one are you looking at in particular?
Well, I'm looking where we ended up this year. I mean, the red on civics and economics. Last year, we had an advanced pass rate of thirty-eight percent. This year, we're nineteen.
Now, that's the percentile rank. So that shows you how our advanced rate stacked up across all of the divisions in the consortium.
But we are in the red?
Yep.
Versus the yellow last year?
Yes, ma'am.
So what does that mean?
That means that we have fewer percentages of our kids score above five hundred this year than last.
Okay. And then you see a big variation in that year to year or?
Yes, ma'am.
One of the things that's really good for us, if you look at like grade eight math, if you see that there where we had a forty-eight point seven percent last year, and this year it's a sixty-four point seven, that doesn't meet the benchmark for accreditation as far as what the state has. But it could be that we meet it in growth as far as, or it's called RTN. We reduced the failure rate by ten percent. So we have several on here that are able to do that, that could potentially help us out.
And to the point of the passive advance rate, you've got to keep in mind that there's really no incentive structure present that would cause us to focus on that particular statistic. However, in the new state accountability system that the Board of Education is putting together, there is a significant incentive. So with that mastery index, we will give extra points if a kid scores past advance. So I think that's something that we'll be all paid with more close attention to as we move ahead.
Thank you, Dr. Earth.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Next up, the July first to fifth schedule.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We talked about maybe having a virtual, you know, week this week or the holiday week, but we have too much to do.
One shot.
We would request that we kind of do what we normally do, which is have it as a regular eight-hour day for Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, and then have Thursday, Friday off, which is July fourth and July fifth. Our staff works very, very hard.
Any problems with that, guys?
I don't have any.
Sounds like a good plan to me.
Thank you. Before I go on to, I don't know if we need to vote to, for you all to approve of the value. If we do, we probably should move that to an action item because we need to move forward with that sooner rather than later. Debbie's going to need some time to upload some stuff to do, so.
It's a busy summer.
Yeah. I just want to give us the go-ahead to move forward with it.
Any questions, comments, concern about evaluating? We don't have to vote to move to a formal action?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, the July board meeting date.
Thanks again, Mr. Chair. So typically, we have a lot of, we have some openings right now, but sometimes we have some folks who decide to move on or retire. And we'd like to maybe schedule it, the next July meeting is late in July as we can.
July, I would be in.
July thirtieth?
Yes.
I should be open that day as well?
Okay. July thirtieth, it is six o'clock here. Thank you.
Fantastic. Now, riveting budget analysis. I'm glad you guys got to stay for this.
Yeah. That's part of the whole thing.
Yeah, yes.
Analysis of the current budget, the May thirty-first, twenty-point four is attached. As of the end of May, eight point three-three percent of the budget year is raining. Basically, it is ahead of budget for this point in the year. And state sales tax payments are on track at this point in the year as well. All major expenditure functions are under budget for this point in the year. And the Treasury's Office is currently behind on transfers, but lots of cumulative revenues and expenditures are taken into consideration. We'll have approximately thirty percent in county funds for the remainder of this quarter.
Any questions, comments for Ms. Coler?
We're still figuring out what character we're going to look like, but we're in really good shape.
Yeah, fantastic. You did a great job, Morgan.
They deserve a round of applause.
All right, Pulaski County Audit Report.
I'm here to present the combined audit that we have with the county. The one thing I want to draw attention to is in the very back of the audit report on page one thirty-one, you'll find what's called the Schedule of Findings and Questions of Cost. Should have tapped it for you. So we received an unmodified opinion, which is the best you can get. There were some material weaknesses identified, but none of the findings were related to score. So that's a good thing.
Fantastic.
And then I also wanted to go over management comments with you all for the school board. We received two comments. Basically, comments are non-baddest findings, things that usually relate to internal controls and are on a lesser scale of severity in terms of audits. The one, first comment is related to our capital asset policy. They recommended that we have a formal capital asset policy to be established to include rights to use in capital assets, which means not like the most people. But I have drafted that policy to be adopted for next year, which is next on the agenda. And then the other comment was related to appropriations, expenditures, and expenditures in excess of appropriations for our school nutrition fund. That was just an oversight when Mr. Stafford and I were changing roles and we just didn't request official appropriations control or supervision. Money was there, just wasn't done right on paper.
Any questions for Ms. Coler or the rest of the county report? I'm sure if we do, we know how to contact you. Next up, the financial policy.
And this is just the policy that I came up with. It's basically, it just goes over how we classify our capital assets, which are land, buildings, vehicles, those sorts of things. And it was also reviewed by our auditors. They seem to be happy with it. So hopefully, next year, we won't have that problem.
And this is a regulation to one of our policies, so y'all have to feel free to just be aware of it.
Fantastic.
Sorry, getting so sore.
Always, always fantastic. All right, next up on the agenda is the disciplinary attendance report data, or data report for last month's school.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And again, we've seen a lot of good increases in both our attendance and our behaviors. If you all haven't seen these, I did want to show you the, and thanks to Ms. Compton for providing us behavior data for the entire school year. You can see that on your screen now. I didn't have the opportunity to, I think, because we didn't do this last year, so I don't know how we would compare it. But if you think about it over the course of a full year, these are not bad numbers. And the best part is you look at, or as I looked at, from when we started this to the end of school, the numbers did go high significantly. So we're very, very happy with this. Thank you, Debbie, for putting that together. So I'd be glad to answer any questions concerning attendance or behavior reports.
Any questions, comments from Mr. Graham? You guys have been doing a great job. Next up, Dr. Folch, with the UH Angels State IDAP Factors of Consideration.
Which one of these do you want me to put up there?
I'll go with the slide.
Wait, under fifteen minutes there.
I'm doing my best.
All right.
This is a really uncomfortable topic. So I wanted to come to you tonight and talk to you a little bit about the new question that the VDOE has proposed factors for consideration and to talk to you about how Pulaski County Public School Special Education Department plans to implement it. The brokers love the implementation or the information on it is to let you all know kind of where our stance is on it. And I want to make sure that we let you all know that we, as a department, recognize any discussion involving a student's reproductive health, sexual health, or relationships should be at the discretion of the parent or the guardian. We recognize that the information the VDOE is requesting that we include in the IDAP as a factor for consideration is sensitive and is often determined by the family's religious or cultural background. We wish to honor the rights and beliefs and desires of the student's family while remaining compliant with the Code of Virginia. I'll present the information as it's written and then how we, as a special education department, will handle this very sensitive topic. So provided for you, the language from VDOE comes straight off of their website that talks about the legislation and the implementation this legislation came in 2020. And it is requesting that we discuss with families and put into the factors for consideration the child's access, in a nutshell, to the family life curriculum. I need to explain what the factors are. Federal law requires eight specific factors for consideration be addressed within the contract, within the IDAP, so the contract that we sign with parents. This particular factor that they're requesting is being put in by the state, not by federal law. It's not required under IDEA, but the state does have the discretion and the right to add things to their, the way they implement IDEA. And this is something that they have added. I provided for you a copy of the actual legislation and the way it's written. Essentially, it's saying that we have to consider the need for age-appropriate and health-related appropriate instruction related to sexual health, self-restraint, self-protection, respect for personal privacy, and personal boundaries of others. So in your packets, you have a copy of the guidelines of consideration that are provided by the VDOE. And then you also have the consideration guide that we would use if we were fully implementing the way the VDOE wants. But that's the discussion. Couple of highlights from that. Talk about performance deficits and what that is, the definition of possessing a skill or not possessing a skill and being able to demonstrate that skill. Talks about personal boundaries, personal privacy, self-protection, self-restraint, sexual health, specially-designed instruction, and student voice. When you're looking at the IDAP and curriculum considerations, they're asking us to consider body systems, specifically, if you're living in community relationships, dating violence, including the focus on informing high school students that consent is required before sex, human sexuality characteristics of abusive relationship, guidelines for prevention, steps to takes to discern sexual assault, human reproduction, marital violence, and social emotional competence, and as well as disease prevention. Also discussed concerning behaviors. Concerning behaviors are behaviors that may impact that child's ability to appropriately interact, therefore appropriately accessing the free, appropriate public education. It may lead to difficult or dangerous situations or discipline in the school setting, possible criminal behaviors. I wanted to point out that we already address these as part of the IDAP. We, as a division, implement functional behavior assessments and behavior intervention plans to deal with behaviors that rise to this level of concern. We address them, we handle them through the IDAP process. We create the functional behavior assessment, look at what the cause of behavior is, what the function is, as Dr. Phil would say. And then address that with a behavior intervention plan that is given teaching an appropriate skill or correcting a behavior. On Virginia IDAP, this is what the question will look like. It's embedded currently at like their twelve or thirteen factors for consideration. This one will be embedded at number seven. This just kind of gets you what their case signatures screen will look like. I wanted to point out consideration. Consideration means to think, ponder, or study and examine carefully. That's what they're asking us to do, is to consider access to this. And how we're going to do that is we're And how we're going to do that is we're going to expect our case managers to explain the legislation, what they've asked us to do, and then we're going to ask the parents how they want to proceed. It is going to be their call. They will be the decision makers in whether or not we have a conversation in a new form. They'll be the decision makers in how they want it to look in the AIP. The beautiful thing about the factors for consideration is that a parent has the ability, within that part of the AIP, to put exactly what they want to say. Um, it is the one place in the AIP that the parent can unadulterate and put what they thought, what they think, what they want, what their views are, okay? So, that's what we're going to use this section for, and we're going to say exactly what the parent wants us to say. If they wish us to go through and really look at what they're asking, we will facilitate that, and I will help with that. But if they don't want to, we're going to put in exactly what they want us to put. So, I'm going to give you some examples, and I don't mean them to be funny, but it was really worked like this without trying to be funny. So, the first, Mr. and Ms. Zee have indicated that they provide adequate instruction in self-help in relationships that come. Bart does not require additional supports or accommodations, and by the way, has been written in the accommodations to support curriculum to access family life. The next one that we perceive particularly helpful would be that Mr. and Ms. Bie have expressed a desire to opt out of the family life curriculum and are exercising a parental right to move Sally away from the family life curriculum. Frankly, I see this as becoming a problem, so that you're aware, I think we'll have more parents that will opt out of the family life curriculum, particularly students with disabilities. I think that'll be an unintended consequence of this particular legislation. Uh, Ms. Cee has advised the AIP team that she considers this line of questioning to be inappropriate and wishes to log her frustration with the line of questioning and factors for consideration in the AIP. At this time, Ms. Cee is opting jock out of the family life curriculum. J is a student who does not require modifications or accommodations above those provided in the core curriculum to access family life. No further discussion or consideration is necessary. And then finally, I included one what maybe the parents would like to discuss it. And so what we put is that Suzie does not achieve at the same level as her non-disable peers, and is not at an age-appropriate adult level as her same-age peers. Suzie requires additional supports in the form of developing an appropriate family life curriculum. In addition, instruction should be addressed, respect for personal space and boundaries of others, guidance and instruction to discern when peers or adults are behaving in her personal boundaries, or are acting in ways that compromise her safety and social stories through providing skills in the area of self-advocacy and personal safety. Now, the next section says questions, but I do want to reiterate, it is not our intention at all to discuss anything with the families or with the students that they are not willing to discuss. It is absolutely the parent's right to say, "I don't want to talk about this. This is none of your business. We will log it and we will go." We will absolutely facilitate a conversation if somebody feels that that's necessary, that that's right, and should be handled within the privacy of that AIP meeting and confidentiality that goes with it. Any questions? So, this is an out process rather than an opt-in process? So, it's kind of complicated. The only life curriculum is part of the curriculum, it's part of the standards. There are standards that are included on the VDOE website for every student to just take in the family life curriculum through help and PE. What this is doing in talking to the particular person who offered this at the VDOE is saying that just like you would discuss math, science, social studies, you are now looking at the curriculum for family life and trying to determine what that student needs. My argument to her was, we're already looking at the curriculum to determine what the student needs. It's not that different from science. We're already addressing it through the factors and through the accommodations through the core curriculum. But they do, the, the purpose is to kind of look at that family life curriculum and see if there is additional support needed for students. And the intention was probably for students with significant cognitive disabilities, and look at accessing that curriculum for students with significant cognitive disabilities, which absolutely we would do if that's what the parent wants us to do. I think where they kind of want to live off reservations, they're including it in every single AIP.
And then my next question would be, um, the sample responses that you just provided to us, would that be provided as options for a parent to pick from? Or would they be developing their own individualized response to that embedded number seven question?
What I anticipate, um, is wordsmithing a little bit to help them.
Okay.
Um, I anticipate some, what the heck, I don't like this. Let me help you develop a statement that will go that way. We always talk with our parents. We encourage conversation through the AIP meeting as we're preparing for the AIP meeting. So, I would anticipate the case manager's going to call and say, "Listen, this is something we need to talk about. What, what direction, how are you feeling? And then, okay, I hear this, 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 and let's craft this together." And this is what we will craft together.
So, the, the first question that I have to ask, the opt-in, opt-out. Is that you mentioned that this is part of the curriculum, so there really is no opt-out?
You can.
You can strip, you can opt out.
You can absolutely opt out of the family life curriculum.
Yes. Elementary, middle, and high.
Okay, okay. And as far as the, um, to see where they're evaluated, if you've got a parent said, "Yes, I want my, my child to be in this," and you look at where they're at in it, what is the measurable? If it was math or science or something like that, I mean, it's pretty simple to measure. With something like family health, uh, how do you, how do you do that?
It's a great question.
For the third grade issue.
I think that's where we would use the discussion guide when you're looking at observable behaviors. Where this is, to me, the most valuable is when you have a student who has some behavior that we would call aberrant, um, maybe some sexual behaviors that are showing up in school, or some behavior that places that child in danger. Then we would have the conversation about what, what is this behavior? What's causing the behavior? We would use the functional behavior assessment and go through it and try and figure out how do we navigate this to help that child correct the behavior and get back on the right path. You know, there's not, in a set, there's not a normed and standardized assessment like what we would use for math or for reading or for language. So, it is really going to be guided by what's being observed by the parent and what's being observed in the school, if, if the parent wishes for that to be addressed. You're welcome.
So, this wouldn't be specialized based on what their needs are? They would be dropped into just say, third grade, uh, family life class?
If they don't, if they require additional support or specially-designed instruction, it can be technically delivered within the confines of the third grade class. Or if you've got a student with a significant cognitive disability, it would be done in an adaptive PE class. There are some school visions that choose to contract out with folks who specialize in working with students who have significant cognitive disabilities, perhaps the Women's Resource Center. Would be one DCU is looking at creating some curriculum areas, but nothing's been put out officially yet. So, what we would do is approach it, just like we would do in the other piece of the AIP, and look at the curriculum that's there, and then what is age-appropriate for that child? And, and what's developmentally appropriate?
Now, in some ways, it seems to me that, uh, it brings a parent's attention to the availability of the education more so than, than just your mainstream student in a classroom. May come home with a form, somebody misses it, they're knocked in, knocked out. Because we develop AIPs with them, they're brought, it's brought very quickly to their attention as available. One last question. If this was born out of twenty-twenty legislation, what took so long?
So, when they pass legislation like this, the General Assembly gives a date that it has to be developed by, and that it has to be implemented by. And my assumption is that this date is approaching, so they have to put it in Virginia AIP by this month. Nothing like being prepared. And, um, I'm assuming that it took some integrity that long to kind of get it together and, and get it ready, and then implement and put it in, embedded into the system, and then get the guidance documents together. You're welcome.
Any other questions for Dr. Poulter? Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
Next up is the Community Health Center MOU discussion. Uh, before we get started, I would just like to say how refreshing it is to see so many folks invested in the success, uh, well-being of our students. Thank you for, for coming here and sharing your thoughts and feelings. Uh, it's, it's great that you, you came here, gave up your, your summer Tuesday night. It doesn't happen that often, so it's very well appreciated. And, you know, this discussion started because of the MOU, uh, who's up for renegotiation on the first of July, so, this board really likes to get all opinions and hear all the facts and, and try to see all the angles, because we like, we like to get this input. And myself, um, personally, I had no clue how any of this happened, so I wanted to educate myself on, on this process as well. So, you know, that spurred a lot of conversation from, from board members to their constituents and to our internal employees to kind of figure out what was working and what wasn't working. So, that's what we were kind of trying to get back to with this MOU. Some, uh, from what I heard from a lot of our members and staff, uh, very positive about the program, but some simpler, plainer language of what was offered, what wasn't offered, and clearly spell out some of those things. That's why we want to have this discussion tonight.
And I, I would add that it's also, um, the concern of this board that parents are obviously kept in the loop. There's a lot of transparency, communication. That has seemed to be the case from people who have reached out to me. But I have heard the MOU from top to bottom, and I think there might be some conflict with seven point five with the community center stating that they will adhere to the federal and state guidelines, and it, but if you read the state and federal guidelines, it, it, it kind of contradicts what the verbiage might be or is on their website. So, we're just trying to make sure that when the MOU states that they will adhere to federal and state guidelines and that conflicts with what's presented on the website, that we clear some of that up. And I think that was something in question amongst our members too, and why we began discussing and looking into and why I'm glad you were here tonight.
I'm very appreciative of the people who've come forward and given personal testimony, or, you know, the student that you've referred, I've received a few emails, and all that does sincerely weigh in on how, you know, how we figure our way through this. I've been involved kind of with this clinic in pointing out my concerns since I was Citizen Pain. And, um, you know, so I'm, I'm kind of familiar with it. And as Sabrina just alluded to, some of the areas we think we can tighten up, we want to use this also as an opportunity to bring some information to the public they may not be aware of, what state law may allow for. So, I'm going to cover three areas of consideration that have been on my radar when it comes to renewing this MOU. First area is Virginia Code, Section fifty-four point one dash twenty-nine sixty-nine, Section E. And if you're not familiar with that. That code states in part, there's a lot to it, it says, "A minor shall be deemed an adult for the purpose of consenting to: one, medical or health services needed to determine the presence of or treat an arrhythmia disease or any infectious or contagious disease that the state Board of Health requires to be reported; two, medical or health services required in case of birth control, pregnancy, or family planning, except for the purposes of sexual sterilization; three, medical or health services needed in the case of outpatient care, treatment, or rehabilitation for substance abuse; four, medical or health services needed in the case of outpatient care, treatment, or rehabilitation for mental illness or emotional disturbance; as on say, a minor shall also be deemed an adult for the purpose of accessing or authorizing the disclosure of medical records related to the subdivisions one through four." That relates to treating, you know, children as adults should they want to access care that falls under those categories. What is rather notable to me, and the absurdity of state law, and there's a lot of it, is that two paragraphs down, it points out that a child that is under the age of seventeen cannot donate blood without a parent's permission. So, that's state law. I mean, there's a lot of absurdity that occurs with that, I think we can all agree on. You know, we've heard assurances from the clinic staff that the stipulations in the memorandum of understanding would provide those services when we provided through our health clinic at the school, but the state law on that is unequivocal. So, it stands to reason that the clinic could feasibly be put in a position where they have to decide, do they want to violate the state law and risk medical licensing, or violate a contract with the school system? So, a lot of attention is being placed on the issue of birth control. I believe the bigger concern, or at least to me, is on the mental health treatment and/or substance abuse treatment aspect of this. Prescription medication for mental health treatment is the go-to method primarily. And prescription medications for mental health have had light box warning labels on them from the FDA for years because of psychotrophic drugs that they weren't tested on adolescents or minors, children. And they can have adverse and/or exacerbity that affects on young people. It can make a child more depressed, more anxious, more suicidal. And a parent should always have the right to know and consent to a child being placed on any such medication or undergoing any such treatment. State law says they do not have to be consulted. State law says they do not have to be given access to medical records. So, yeah, a new patient, package, has to be executed and signed by parents and guardians. Before a student who's seen there, we agree on that. Parents do not, after that, however, have to be notified if their child were to seek out the clinic for other services. And particularly rehabilitation being at the high school, where these children are old enough to walk next door. The state law says they don't have to be notified, parents do not. So, that means there's potential, at least, for a student seeking services related to family planning, STD treatment, mental health, or substance abuse. The second area that I've given a lot of consideration to is the MOU itself, which Sabrina addressed. You know, despite reassurances that the contract specifically prohibits treatment related to those treatment areas, what the state law considers a minor child and adult, it does not. It's very general, um, it addresses the issue of birth control. I think we can get into more specifics in spelling out, um, those areas that we would not want the school-based health center to engage in treatment onsite for those areas. But the MOU does not unequivocally state that the contract with the school system, that they do not, we would need to spell out the MOU to make it clear that the contract with the school system is unequivocal on that. That is something I'd be willing to look into. There's another area that, you know, I thought about pretty considerably the last couple of weeks in considering this, and that, reading through our own school division policy on this. And on the face of it, at the time this was agreed to, um, we, we violated our own school division policy on this. There's two policies related to community use of school facilities. You can look them up, it's Policy KG and Policy KG dash R. I'll read you a few portions of it that I think were a violation of, some consider. This policy had, was last revised in twenty-eighteen, so it was the policy in effect at the time this clinic was approved. Says that the school facility will charge, charges and fees for the use of school facilities are designed not to limit or prohibit use, but to protect citizens from the expenditures of public money appropriated for classroom instruction and for other purposes. The expenses of heating, lights, water, and building attendance services, as well as protection of school property and security of the buildings when various groups use school facilities make it necessary to have specific regulations with relation to the use of the school buildings and grounds. Right now, the school system is very involved of the utilities, lights, custodial services for the presence of the clinic. So, that is a bit of a violation of our own policy on that. It goes on to say that because schools are educational institutions, their facilities should be used in an appropriate manner to enhance the education, health, and recreation and culture of the community. You ought to remember that, because I'm going to address that in a minute. Under fees for the use of the facilities, it says, "Building attendant fees shall not be waived or reduced. Building attendant fees for events outside of normal operating hours shall be paid by all users, including local and state government agencies." Under another section, it addresses, uh, the fact that permission will not be given for a profit-making activity conducted by any profit, for-profit business. I do understand this is a nonprofit. That's why I believe these exceptions were made, that continuing on in our division policy goes on to talk about, "Community use of schools program is not meant to provide a permanent home for any large organization's continuous operations. However, school facilities can be made available for temporary long-term use while an eligible organization is in the process of procuring its permanent home." There's other areas, I'm going to bore you all for playing it out. I mean, that stood I mean, that stood out to me in that I believe we are somewhat in violation of our own policy on that. But I do understand it related to this clinic being a nonprofit, a 501(c)(3) organization, and the fact they're working in the medical field and dental field, providing one of those services that enhance the education, health, and recreation or culture of the community. I think we need to give consideration to what that means, and that we have a lot of 501(c)(3) organizations in our community that can make that same claim, and certainly make the same claim that they would enhance the culture of the community. One came to mind are churches. I mean, there's an argument that churches, I think, can make easily, that they are benefit to the physical health, mental health, and behavioral health of attendees. We have had a relationship with Beans and Rice in the past. In fact, they work directly with our schools and active school programs, but they don't have an onsite location at our school. There's another group here I know, Instill Wines, and having an understanding of the services that they offer, they can make a good argument about wanting to get space on our schools, and they're all nonprofits. So what I am afraid we may have done is position ourselves to be in violation of the equal access ruling, as the springboard is made, should these other facilities approach us and ask for the same access. Maybe it happens. Maybe it doesn't happen, but it's something we have to give consideration to, because we wouldn't be in a very good position to say no. So like I said, we're thinking on all of these things. If anybody knows me, you know, I'm going to take a deep, deep, deep dive, and I'm going to read all that I can, just to help me, you know, come to an informed decision on these things. So thank you for your time.
In addition to what Ms. Payne spoke about, another area of concern is liability. I've spoken about this last lesson, is that there was a malpractice suit that came against the clinic. I could easily see you could ask the county public schools in the county possibly get dragged in as well. The exposure of this liability and examination of Virginia state law compared to memorandum of understanding, the pecking horse, if you would, and the school policy KG-R, what's allowed in the schools. I think these three things specifically, and we can elaborate on those more, need to be introduced to our council. I think we need our council to look at these things and tell us, what is, you're in violation here. This is, this priority takes over this one. These are the things that they can do and they can't do. I really think we need some kind of letter of, what is it it's called, a legal written letter or a legal counsel letter?
Opinion.
A legal written opinion, so we can have that. I had another parent reach out to me, asking about how patients, how patients are for like the spouses of faculty and staff. They don't work here, they're not a student, but they're the family. How would they be able to get into the clinic? They ask if non-affiliated patients have access to the clinic, to the high school, for their treatment. If so, what entrance would they use? Is the new back entrance used as a patient entrance and exit? The schools, and they said the schools have a policy and procedure for entrance to our schools. If the back entrance is used, what safety protocols are in place to ensure the building and campus? So this is the door that they added when they renovated that classroom. And they're asking, first part of the question was, one part was, can non-school-related cure patients, can they use this facility? No, okay.
Are we able to speak instead of just?
I'm okay with you.
That's acceptable. If you want to answer questions.
Yeah, absolutely.
My introduction.
I'm Michelle Bronze. I'm the CEO of the Community Health Center of the New River Valley, and I have spoken to you all before, and it's nice to see you again. I appreciate the invitation. As you all know, it was a different superintendent and a different board last year that we worked with to create this MOU. I appreciate you bringing out some of the things that Mr. Williams has brought out previously when he was Citizen Williams also. And I'm happy to have the discussion about all of this information. The policies that you're saying that you think that you broke obviously is in your hands to determine how we need to move forward. I would remind you that New River Valley Community Services, who has been embedded in the school systems here for many years, is also a nonprofit organization with permanent offices in the schools. So that would affect that relationship.
But that's a policy that we're going to have to look with a lot, not only New River Valley Community Services, 4-H, Resource Center, we have all those folks that are coming in and using our facilities, and we don't, we don't charge them. They come in and provide valuable services like this, too. And so that's something that we're going to consider. I appreciate you bringing it up.
I'll have that up in more in terms of, I know we have groups that can speak to the kids and all this, but again, but more in terms of somebody that says, hey, I want a brick and mortar slot.
Yeah, and Michelle's right, that New River Community Services has offices in all of our schools, sometimes two and three offices in our schools, too. You know, 4-H is in our classrooms. They don't have an office necessarily, but they do come in quite a bit throughout the school year, too. Same with the Resource Center, they don't have offices, but they, they don't submit one of those, the KG that you're talking about, the use of school facilities, they don't submit, they don't submit those. I think, I don't know. I think we need to pull it off, too.
Sure. And answer to your question, Mr. Williams, around entrance and exit, that was the decision of the maintenance crew and the former, or the principal and the superintendent when they laid out the space, so.
So what are they used for?
What did they use for?
That back door, if I have, if I have a student, Eric, that's my. Yes, good evening, Eric. I'm sorry, Eric. We've had many times. That back entrance and exit is used if I have a patient who, say, I just diagnosed with COVID and they need to leave the school. I would walk them out that door rather than walking them down the hallway, therefore exposing, you know, tons of kids and students to that. Otherwise, that back, that back entrance, it's not really utilized.
Yes, sir. It was also the request of the former board and superintendent, will we not see any spouses, any family members, any community members? We certainly could. Many school clinics across the country do that, but we wanted that request, and so we do not see anyone else outside this family.
All right. Permission is free, really. Last week, there was a lot of phone calls, a lot of conversations with a lot of different people. If this was the clinic that you guys had on Radcliffe Road and Route 11, we wouldn't be discussing it all, because it's your own facility. Where it gets very, very muddy and murky is when it's housed here. We become entwined, so to speak. There are students, there's policies that we'll talk about that does not apply to your clinic at all. So, you know, you get into parental rights, what things can and can't be done. If you've done some of the things that this Virginia state law allows on Radcliffe Road, it's between you and the parent. Here, it's between the schools and the parent, and what has been allowed to happen. So that's where it gets, has nothing to do with removing any kind of healthcare from anybody. I understand that, you know, the problem, from who I've talked to, the problem lies in the parents who are not getting the help from wherever the healthcare clinic may be. They're not doing it. That's through the teachers and some of the nurses that's talked to me about, but that's the problem. The convenience of it, all of this is going to have to be relayed with our legal counsel and talk to, and that's our job, is to take all of y'all's input, from all these different directions and make a decision. You know, it's tough when you hear the stories about this kind of healthcare, but there are things that we cannot allow to happen for the sake of.
Sure. And we want to follow state and federal law to the T. We have too much at risk ourselves in terms of providers losing their licenses, our designation as a federally qualified health center going away. There is no way I want any of that to happen. I have run this clinic since 2005, and all of these people can attest to the fact that it means more to them than anything else, and that's why we're here today. I think we consider ourselves a fabric, a part of the fabric of this community already. So. Please, for us, come up with an MOU that's satisfactory to you.
Well, I think that's what we're asking of this my request. It's going to take a lot of back and forths between your organization, and I think some of our, definitely nursing staff, because I think they're more well-versed, at least not than I am, on some of those procedures. And like I said, I think it's going to just be simpler, clearer language of what we do and don't do.
And that goes back to the using counsel. You know, when you're looking at state law, can a memorandum override that law? That's part of it.
I don't know that one. That's a good question.
Thank you.
Thank you much.
Thank you.
All right, next up, Care Portal discussion. Much all in the same vein, you know, have another request from another civic organization that we need to kind of really talk about in open form and kind of get all our members' opinions, the communities' opinions, so we can try to make the most informed decision that we can. So, for open membership.
Well, I think we can hardly compare the Care Portal to the clinic in that Care Portal would not operate here at all. It's a software program, at the end of the day, where data and needs are entered into. So I don't think they're very comparable. They're not offering the same services, and they're not making the same requests, and they're not actually filtering it. But we had people talk about Care Portal last meeting and how it would work and what it might mean for fellow resisting needs in our community at a pretty minimal cost to the school system, which some of us believe we could actually probably get businesses or some type of other funding that might cover that cost. So it's just something we probably should look at and discuss at least, and consider whether or not it makes sense for our school system going forward.
I would say, yes, we did hear a presentation from Care Portal prior to that. I was at the presentation they gave of emergency management on launch plans, and I think I finally have never seen how it works, and what, you know, for any role the school system, if we openly decided that, would play in that, I do understand at this point, I mean, there's a structure, a skeletal structure needs to be put in place with Care Portal. I am interested in seeing how that builds out, what community partners should get involved, would churches get involved? I will admit, my initial reaction was like, oh, yeah, I mean, this seems to eliminate some of the burden off of the schools, teachers, councils, people that identify these needs, perhaps try to meet them themselves, and we can put it out onto the communities, and yes, churches, where I do think it should be picked up, and they will, you know. But what I'm concerned about is, would we be adding another layer of expectation onto our staffs who have already been asked to play just about every role to the detriment of teacher? And it shows up on our scores. And that, that's my angle and where I'm coming from, in that I believe our primary mission is education and to keep us focused absolutely on education, because as we've seen, and luckily they're going back up, education's taken a bit of a hit, and we really need to put our attention there. So, you know, from where I stand, I want to see how this builds out a little more, see if we may get another identifier involved, Citizen Department of Social Services, and then decide if it would be to the benefit of our students and as well the community as being directed.
To speak a little bit to that, the districts that you guys listed as partners, speaking to Grayson County and Gaylight City, they seem to say that the most benefit came from having that single point of contact with the DSS partner, and that was the, that was really who ran the program. So to Ms. Payne's speaking, that, you know, really wasn't an extra duty that a teacher or never sort of someone else has to pick up and try to do that on top of their job. So, you know, as she said, would like to see the structure kind of built out and how that would actually work.
And I would agree with that, but I would argue that our teachers and guidance counselors and such are already identifying needs in a major way on a daily basis. I'm not so sure that implementing this would add to what they are already doing, but it is a consideration. As Gina mentioned, our main objective is education, should be.
Is it redundant? Is it redundant? Do we already have these processes in place?
Well, no, they're not in place. And what the software, the problem the software solves is making the connections and letting the community do what a community should do, and our churches do what our churches should do. And that's the need of our community when there is one. So the software provides that platform, and teachers are already telling somebody they're gonna need. I don't know who it is, they may be calling their mom and saying, hey, can you get me money? I don't know. Or spending their own or whatever it may be. They're identifying those needs, whether it's a guidance counselor or a teacher. So we, I would not want to add anything to our teachers either. They've got a good job, and we do want to focus on educating our kids and getting these S O L scores up, and our kids proficient and ready to tackle the big world out there. But I think they're doing this already, and the software just kind of meshes people together. Community doing what the community should be doing for the needs in our community. Fantastic.
Any other comments, questions, concerns? Okay, something a little less, you know, serious. So I'm the garbage guy, so. We're going to do the one bag challenge for the last month. It's been a very successful program in partnership between the county, both the schools and the school board. To date, we have picked up 1,008 bags of garbage, over 550 tires, and 250 folks have participated in the program, a lot of being our staff and students. So what we're going to do now, for those who haven't seen, we're going to drop three names of our students that have picked up garbage in our community, done that civic duty, and they will win a $100 gift card. If you picked up, you know, they might go to the school office. So come over to Mr. Graham.
All right. Big winner. All right, we have Bella Lawson.
All right, that's a quarter. A quarter. By the way. Quarter. Billy Cox and Ms. Payne.
Billy Cox again.
Billy Cox. Billy Cox picked up a lot of garbage.
Daniel Gall.
All right. You guys picked up your gift card from Ms. Crawford. They're not here, obviously. We didn't.
All right, moving on. Counters, it's been a long, long information session, guys.
So we have, we started summer school on Monday. Everything went fairly, really smoothly. Wanted to say a special thank you to our staff that's running the summer school right now. We have, at last count, or when I was there, we have about 60 at Dublin, a little more than that at Glasskey Elementary, probably over 100 at Summit at the middle school, all doing really, really good work. A very amount of teachers that have given their time to come in and help us this summer, so we're definitely grateful for that, too. We do have our 11-month picnic coming up on Thursday. I hope you all can make it. We'll understand your busy schedules. And then schools will be closed on June 14th for the recognition of.
All right, then, those are to the action items. First up is the V S B A policy updates. This is a whole over from last month. Any questions, comments, concerns about the pending policy updates? Hearing now, can I get a motion to approve the V S B A policy updates?
I'll make it.
Second?
I'll second.
Mrs. Porter.
Ms. Payne?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Cox?
Yes.
Thank you. Next up is appointment of board members to committees. First up is the seeking nominations for two board members for the CTE advisory committee. No, I cannot.
I'll nominate, I'll nominate Josh Taylor, the CTE.
Second?
I'll second.
I'll second.
Mrs. Porter.
Mrs. Payne?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Thank you all. Now, the second member of the C T committee. Your nominations.
I'll nominate Billy Williams, who will be part of the C T advisory committee going forward.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Mrs. Porter.
Mrs. Payne?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
All right, thank you, guys. Next up is members for the special advisory committee to have nominations. Could I, I will nominate someone that's not myself. I would like to nominate Gina Payne.
I'll second that one.
Second? Well, I was the first. Mrs. Porter. It's been a long day. It's been a long day.
Mrs. Payne?
I don't know.
Why, Miss K?
Okay, yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
All right, a second nomination. Do I hear a nomination for someone?
I nominate Billy Williams to be the second seat on the special committee.
Oh, could I, do I hear a second? I'll make that motion. Mrs. Porter.
Mrs. Payne?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Thank you much, guys. Next up is the retirement of the Richard Knoll track jersey. Last month, we had a really moving presentation from Mr. David Wright about a former colleague and athlete of his, Mr. Richard Knoll. So, seeking a motion to approve the retirement of this former track stores jersey.
I would like a motion that we approve retire Mr. Richard Knoll's track jersey.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Chair, can I make comments on that?
Yes, you may.
I've been brought up to speed on, you know, what the importance of retirement of a jersey is in terms of a recognition and the meaning of it. I do note, Mr. Wright, in his own presentation to this board, did not suggest a retirement of the jersey. He has in his possession one of Mr. Knoll's original jerseys and in light of Mr. Knoll's untimely passing, what he had asked us for is to provide a means of recognition of the exceptional athletic achievements Mr. Knoll had in his time here. I think it would be prudent of this board to reserve the retirement of jerseys to graduates of our school that go on to achieve some athletic prowess beyond what they may achieve here, reserve it for a, retirement of a jersey is you taking that out of commission, basically, in use. So, I mean, it holds a lot of value. I would suggest in this matter to honor specifically what Mr. Wright asked of us and place Mr. Knoll's framed jersey along with a bio on his athletic history into our Hall of Fame.
So, this is unprecedented. We have to cancel that, that motion. So, I guess we're squash that motion and.
There's no second.
There's no. So.
I make a motion that we place a Mr. Knoll's framed jersey along with a bio on his history of Pulaski County High School into our Hall of Fame designated period.
A quick question on that, because I'm new, I'm new to the board here. Is there an application, though, to go to that Hall of Fame?
Not to my knowledge. Welcome anyone looking at the old timers, Miss Bowlin. I'll start to call you an old timer. He's ready to.
No, I'm an old timer. I don't know that. And then there actually is an application process, a nomination process, and then a committee through the high school. You can absolutely work with that.
So, should we follow that process?
Yeah, we probably need to follow our Austin procedures. So, let's, I guess we'll table that till next month. Thank you much.
Future agenda items?
Future agenda items, yeah. Let's move that to today here. Do any board members have any future agenda items?
Should that probably go on as an informational item instead of action item for us to discuss?
Oh, yes, yeah. We have that next month.
Should we add any other thing else to it once we get some information back with the clinic and hospital? Should that be a future agenda?
I think that needs to be probably a future agenda item. I mean, with the show support that we have here, I think we need to discuss that out in an open session with everybody. And just for the record, I think, so I've been with the community health center for, I don't know, two, since 2022, when I was in Radford and talked to Dr. Arbogast and Giles today. He would love to have it back with a head transportation. And luckily, Mr. Barclay worked that out for us, too. But I do support it. I appreciate what you all are saying and the policies that we need to consider, but I've seen, I've seen how hard these folks work and how important it is in the families that are taking advantage of using that, including myself. I was over there the other day for a stye infection and they sent me to the eye doctor, so I appreciate that.
I think that we, in our, work on a planer and simple MOU. Is that something we can think about as for?
And I'll contact Mr. Young tomorrow, too, and see if we can give him a time, too, that we can, or do you want to try to work on the MOU first before we start to?
I mean, there's, there's other questions, too, that the council needs to look at from the legal side.
Sure.
I mean, is, if the state law supersedes any memorandum, there's no use to making another one at all. That kind of, you know, and is the school policy of it being housed here, usually all the policy is based off pass law. I need to look at what pass law generated the school policy.
Let me see if I can get in touch with him tomorrow.
Yeah, I'd like to sit in on that, too, and get his opinion.
And the other, future agenda items? I'm going to take this moment to, actually, it's not a future agenda item, but take this moment to speak. One year ago, a fresh-faced Rob Graham came to us. So, now, this is one, it's one year ago. And he's been a great, great change to the culture here in Pulaski County, and you don't understand the impact that you've had on education here, so we greatly appreciate.
Well, appreciated, and I appreciate the welcome. I was in a difficult situation in Radford City and came to a very good place, so thank you.
We're going to raise that 95th number. We are.
Yes, we are.
Way higher. So, that takes us to the recognition of citizens. The next public comments procedures, persons may be present, ideas or concerns regarding Pulaski County schools. The school board at this meeting will take no action. Items presented by citizens may be referred to the superintendent of research who may report back to the school board. If you wish to comment about individual employees or their performance, please present your comments first to the superintendent, since matters will not be discussed at this moment. You will have only three minutes and this session will take no longer than 30 minutes. So, if you come up, please state your name.
You took it from me again.
Okay.
I'm Michelle Bronze, I'm the CEO of the Community Health Center of the New River Valley. And I have a different hat on at the moment. I'm wearing a hat from our family nurse practitioner who was not able to be here this evening, and so she asked that her sentiments be shared, so I'm actually reading on her behalf. Her name is Jeanne Deutsch, and she's a pediatric nurse practitioner who began with the school center when it opened in February 2023. She is a passionate provider and has the following sentiments to share with you. Dear members of the Pulaski County School Board and community, I'm sorry I cannot be here in person at this meeting, but I'm currently traveling out of the area. I am sure others have already explained our clinic's work and shared stories of the many families we have been able to help in the short time we've been a part of the Pulaski County School community. So, my comments are for anyone who is still concerned about our presence at the school or distrustful about what we do. As a mother of five children, I understand the importance of parental involvement, and I would never participate in a model of care that took away a parent's rights or involvement in their child's care. I would never violate the terms of the MOU between the C H C and the school board, both because I personally believe that its stipulations are appropriate and, but most importantly, because to do so would be unethical and would threaten our mission to increase access to quality care and dental care for this community, which desperately needs it. Or perhaps you are concerned that this partnership is an overreach of the school's purpose, but I disagree. Children cannot learn optimally if they are not healthy or if they are in pain. Teachers cannot teach if they have to leave school or direct their children, their students with healthcare issues. We have a shared goal, to keep children and staff healthy and in school, and I have been so inspired witnessing the ways in which your staff and our clinic have worked together for the benefit of your school community. The school nurses, and I think we have a lot of them here tonight, and counselors have reached out to us many times to help families in need of access to medical and dental care. Our nurses and dental staff have gone to bat with them time and time again to ensure that these kids are getting the care they need, arranging schedules to fit in appointments, calling families, encouragingly explaining follow-up care, just finding a way for families that have never had someone to help them, help them now. And the community has noticed and they appreciate us.
Thank you. Please state your name.
Hello, I'm Danielle English, and I'm here with the Community Health Center, I'm the dental program manager, and I'm sharing a letter from one of your staff, Carolyn Wash. Ms. Wash is a health and medical science teacher at Pulaski County High School. She's worked very closely with our staff at the school center. The Community Health Center at Pulaski High School is important to student and teachers. The center has helped with providing a safe, nonjudgmental and welcoming atmosphere, information for students needing health insurance, and helping to guide students for questions for their caregiver's insurance, tours of the clinic, to help students understand the many types of healthcare specialties they may seek in the future, such as lab technicians, respiratory therapy, dental assisting, telehealth, immunology, and vaccinations, preparing students to progress in their C T E courses and receiving mandated tests prior to working in their chosen clientele, no need to miss time from school, no transportation issues, no issues with follow-up reading of tests, and done in a timeframe needed to be successful, encouraging good health and health practices to instill a lifetime of strength and optimal health for our students' future, including vaccinations for school and beyond, providing TV screening for new teachers for convenience and the feeling of being welcomed to Pulaski County schools. Pulaski High School is fortunate to have a school clinic. Our students need and deserve to have a clinic. Staff at the clinic instill a sense of community, caring, and importance to each student with professionalism and kindness. Thank you, Carolyn Wash. Thank you.
Thank you. So, please state your name.
I'm Autumn Castro, and I'm the senior nursing manager at the Community Health Center of the New River Valley. I grew up in a small town in southern West Virginia, similar to Pulaski. It only had one gas station and no stoplights. I'm here today to advocate for those who need our services the most, which are the children. This is because I was one of those children. Because of financial strain and lack of resources, we only went to see the doctor when we were extremely ill and only visited the dentist when there were major issues. Upon entering elementary school, I had, I had major dental deficiencies. It was because of school-based program exactly like the one that is offered at Pulaski High School, that I was able to see a dentist, have surgery, and resolve my dental issues. The care and compassion I was shown as a small child has driven a career focused on giving back to those in similar situations that I was faced with as a child. Please allow us to remain in the school so that children like me can continue to receive these much-needed dental and medical services that many of them would lack access to otherwise. Thank you so much.
Hello again, Erica Sladele Carey, School Program Manager at the Community Health Center. Tonight, I want to share a story with you of one of your students in Pulaski County. I was contacted by a school staff member, about a five-year-old student who came to school with a bleeding ear. The family that he lives with consists of a mom and two children who does not have transportation. This family is homeless and they live with a friend. With so many social determinants and barriers, the school-based health center was the only way for these children to get care. After going through the patient application and consent with the mother, we scheduled medical appointments for both of her children. The student with the bleeding ear had apparently had many ear infections throughout his five years of living. The student was treated for his ear at the school by our provider and given a referral to a specialist. I helped the mother navigate the referral process and apply for charity care for the E N T services that her son so desperately needed. Then I helped her schedule an appointment to get that taken care of. The family was able to secure transportation from a friend to that E N T appointment. The student was diagnosed with an ear polyp and surgery was a suggestion. He had, he has no hearing in that ear as of now, however, he is on his way to feeling better and getting help with his ear. This same student was also found to be an extremely poor oral health. All of his front teeth had completely rotted down. He was seen and evaluated by our dentist, and he requires a full mouth extraction at five years old, every single tooth. The wait for surgical services that he needs for, for his care is very long, since he will need to be anesthetized for the spinal surgery. Also, it has to be outside of the New River Valley, just because we are in a provider shortage area, and thus far, they have not been able to secure transportation for this surgery. Because he is still in, the student came to, a couple of weeks ago, back to the school-based health center to be seen again. Our medical provider diagnosed him with a dental abscess and prescribed an antibiotic. We were able to have the pharmacy deliver the antibiotics to the mother, and they are all the way out in Stenville. And the patient will soon have extractions at one of our centers after we help her secure transportation. Stories like this student are not rare in your school system.
Thank you, thank you. Hello, please state your name.
My name is Cassie Baez, and I'm speaking on behalf of one of our family nurse practitioners. She writes as follows. Dear members of Pulaski County School Board, my name is Kimberly Stevenson, and I'm a nurse practitioner with the Community Health Center of the New River Valley. I currently work in both the Pulaski County High School-based health clinic and our Radford Pulaski site. I also recently moved to Dublin this past year. I've been practicing as a nurse for seven years now. My first nurse practitioner job was in Fayette County, West Virginia, working in a school-based health clinic. Prior to this job, I did not know a lot about school-based health. I initially thought that my job would be a supplement to school nurse that was already in the school, but I quickly realized that my job was much more than that. The school-based health clinic provides much-needed health and dental services to children that otherwise may not have the opportunity to receive this care. It is important to set the example of healthy lifestyle practices and ensuring access to care for children and adolescents so that they can grow up making responsible and informed decisions about their healthcare. There is nothing more rewarding than having a child thanking for just listening to them and making them feel safe and heard. I thoroughly enjoy my job and the ability to make an impact on the lives of the students that we see in the school-based health center. In addition to serving the students, we're able to see teachers and staff. This allows them to be seen for acute visits as well as routine and preventive visits. It is truly an honor to be able to serve our educators in such a convenient way. I strongly encourage you to continue allowing the school-based health clinic to practice. Sincerely, Kimberly Stevenson.
Thank you. Hello.
Hello.
Is that your name?
My name is Sherri Fadwinn. I'm a resident here at Pulaski County. Always a first name. I'm a resident here, I've been in county my entire life, and originally from. Uh, I'm a resident here in Pulaski County, my entire life, and a registered dental hygienist for over thirty years. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of your ally to possibly close the dental medical clinic at P C H S. As I stated, I've been in the dental field for thirty years, and there's always been a lack of access for dental care for Medicaid patients. Now in the year twenty twenty-four, there does, there is even a more deep need than ever. In the time of Pulaski, I believe we only have two full-time dentists and one part-time dentist. At one time, we had five dental practices here in the town, and also a health department dental clinic. In both town and county, I believe, we have a total of eight dental practices, but only one of these dental practices accepts Medicaid for children and adults, thus being New River Valley Community Health Center. There is only one, only one other dental practice in the entire New River Valley that accepts Medicaid for children, which that is only ages from twelve and under, so almost all of these children from seventh grade and higher would not even qualify to see that dental practice. The next dental facility to accept Medicaid would be in the river area. Here in southwest Virginia, we are in great need for more dentists. In general, there is a lack of dental care for all people, but there is even a greater need for dental care for Medicaid patients. I do not have the, the statistics here tonight for Pulaski County students who qualify for medical dental assistance under Medicaid program, but your school, school board has the, has the statistics at your fingertips. You know the great need of our precious children and students here in Pulaski County. Before I was airborne, away by the Community Health Center, I volunteered many years ago to go out to our schools in Pulaski County and Giles County to screen our students for dental need in our public schools. I was not prepared for the emotional impact that was happening. I saw small children with severe dental decay, crying in pain and telling me they cannot sleep at night because their teeth hurt. Not once, but twice, but several times on these annual screening days, this would occur. I drove home on several occasions crying because I could not provide dental care these children, these children needed on that day, not tomorrow, not next week, if they need to care that day. All we were there to do was to screen these students or write down any student's name that may need emergency dental care. Then the school nurse would try to coordinate with the students and parents and daughters to set up dental care for that student. As quoted by Nikki Lockhart, our in-school nurse at P C H S, I have students that haven't had dental checkups for years or medical care outside of urgent care or regular visits. These students are guaranteed an appointment sometimes on that same day. I'm asking each of you, please evaluate the severe impact of access of dental treatment this would cause by choosing to shut down or close our dental clinics at P C H S. Please give our precious children the youth and use the dental medical access that is so greatly needed in that community. Thank you to Michael, listen to my next one.
Thank you. Hello, please state your name.
Good evening, my name's Alex Wood, I'm a dentist at the Community Health Center. I did not plan to speak tonight, but I did see the five-year-old who needs a full mouth extraction, and Ms. Williams, the stuff that we see, we are not prepared for. Full mouth extraction at age of five years old is not normal. Making dentures for people at ages of twenty, thirty years old is not normal. If we're not in the school system, they are not receiving a world health education. This is something, myself, everybody in this room is passionate about, we want to help take care of these students, so what do we need to do? Michelle, Ashley, everybody is on board to talk, so thank you for hearing our concerns, and we just want what's best for our, our kids and to make sure that they have a better future going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other? Oh. Hello.
Hi, I'm from the Great River District. I'm not prepared, I've just been listening to everybody, but a couple things that sort of, when y'all had your comments, one was, um, talking about the policy, what your policy is. You're the ones that can change the policy. You're talking about that. So, you know, don't use that as a crutch, because you can change the policy. Also, one other question, when you said you need to talk to legal counsel, that's all great, I, I'm all for that, making sure everything, we don't have liability. Ask them if there's a way around it. Don't, I'll start playing.
No, no, I was just, I was, I've been thinking about this, too, you know, and I, earlier I mentioned that the trouble lies in we're entwined together.
Yeah.
We're a state, local, federally funded school.
Right.
And there are things that are, that we have to do, and things, people we have to look out for. There's a facility at the bottom of Cougar Trail Road that's been available for sale for a long time. Has that ever been considered? It takes away part of, we're being entwined, you're actually housed on this, but you're close enough to us where we can still help get you patients and things like that.
But it, yeah, my thinking is, you're wanting to ask the lawyer, you know, what liability you can have. Ask him if there's a way around it to be able to keep the facility open, but you had a lot of good stories here tonight, as to what. I can see the liability, yes, but there should be some workarounds with it, too. So, that's my thought. Thank you for all that you do, and thank you for being patient and hearing all the comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I think that was our last commenter, so with that, uh, guys, that's what I learned.